We can open the meeting of February 9th, 2021. My name is Marty Akins, I'm the chairman. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. We have myself, Mr. Akins Chairman, Mr. Cavais, the vice chairman's here. Mr. Chin is here. Mr. O'Brien is here. Mr. Himmel is here and Mr. Frankel is with us tonight. Could I have a meeting, a motion to waive the previous reading of the minutes, January 25th, 26th?
It was 26th. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the meeting of January 26th.
Seconded. Yeah. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, so moved. I need a motion, PBA 2079, 11 Shoreside Road. Motion to withdraw without prejudice, please, Mr. Bass.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, amendment number 20-79, Tanya Holmes, whatever, for a special permit to conduct a home-based candle production business on the premises number 11 Seashore, Shoreside Road. Make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Seconded. Can I have a vote, Madam Court?
Martin Akins?
Yes.
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yeah.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
You.
Okay. Further on to tonight's business, I know we just got 166 Vassal Street just came. The plans just came today. I know they haven't gone out to you guys yet. And we're supposed to have them at least two weeks ahead of time. So we could send them out in a week. You get a week to look at them. So I know I got to see them. I think it's too big, but that's just my opinion. I don't know what's going to happen when that comes again. But we're going to make this thing. All right, anyway. You'll get the plans probably by Monday, I think, well, tomorrow.
I'll be up in the morning.
All right, you might even get them by Friday, Friday or Saturday. Could I have a motion move that to February 23rd, please? 166 Vassal Street, case number Z 2062.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, amendment number 20-62, Harrison Webb for Christina Montran for a variance special permit floodplain finding to demolish existing single-family residents and construct two-town home residences on the premises number 166 Vassal Street. Make a motion to continue the hearing until February 23rd.
Seconded. All right, can we have a vote, Madam Chair?
Martin Akins?
Yes.
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
You.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please, to go into executive sessions? We have to vote for the chairman for next year. Vice Chair, him, we have to vote for the clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of having elections.
Seconded. That's seconded. And we're going to have a voice vote, but I want everyone to know when we go into executive sessions, we have to shut everything down. You'll steal me on, don't go anywhere. We just go in and we're going to do our voting in discussions. So with that, Madam Clerk, could I have a voice vote for the executive sessions?
Martin Akins?
Yes.
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Steve Durkin, we got a, we got a letter remanding case back to us and he's going to tell us what, what they decided, what the decision was, what, what he, what he figured out with the, with the courts. Steve, you're up.
Okay, good evening, Chairman Akins, members of the board, and thank you for putting this on the agenda. I note on the agenda that 20-10 is listed as a remand. And this, this actually is not a remand, but it's, it's really just a notification to the board. Call it a status review. So this, this matter of 93 Grand View Ave was before the board last late spring, early summer. And it involves, it involves a fairly large parcel of land up on Wallaston Hill in a Residence A neighborhood. And, and the owner, the owners, John Mackey and Deborah Heath Mackey wanted to subdivide this rather large lot and into, into two lots so that they could build a single-family home adjacent to the one that's, that's currently there. So after, after hearing from the public and after hearing from the applicant, the board decided to issue a variance. And several neighbors immediately appealed the decision. They were, they were upset that there was going to be a new structure there. They were concerned about what it would look like, et cetera, et cetera. So they appealed to the land court. And both the plaintiff, the plaintiffs, neighbors, and the defendant applicants hired counsel. So that's a good thing. They're both represented by counsel. And the Mackys are represented by Jonathan Hickson, who I believe is with us tonight. And the, the applicant is represented by attorney Lane Goldberg, who I don't think was going to be with us tonight, but he may be. I think I saw his name there. So counsel for the plaintiffs and counsel for the defendants have had extensive negotiations to see if something could be worked out that the applicants could live with and that the neighbors who appealed this decision could live with. And what, what they've come up with is a second plan, a new plan, where a, a single-family home would still be built, but it would be moved. And it would be moved further away from the, the next-door neighbor, the abutter, the Curran's property. And it would be the same square footage. However, if the driveway would be moved from next to the applicant's home over to the other side, next to the neighbors, the Curran's home. And the structure itself would be moved closer to the applicant's house.
Okay.
The, the frontage, the front setback would be, would be changed from 35 feet to 25 feet, I believe. All other required setbacks would be in place. All dimensional requirements would be adhered to. And I mean, it sounds to me like maybe a reasonable resolution of this litigation, because this, you know, this is going to go to trial. The zoning board is a defendant.
Yep.
And so I would not be presumptuous enough to make a decision on this and sign off for the city without reporting this and seeking input from the zoning board, because it's you folks who made the decision. Realize there may be other neighbors that have something to say about this who weren't involved in the litigation process. And maybe that's the case, maybe it's not the case. But this is just, this is a status. It's informational. And certainly the board is, you know, within its rights to act this evening on this settlement. Or the board may wish to give this more thought. I understand that, that board members may not have had a chance to look at the new site plan that's sent over to you today. So that's, that, that's what's, that's what the situation is right now.
Okay. So what I read, they're keeping, they're keeping all the setbacks, even with the 25 feet. And then if everything is going to be legal, that house will be legally, be able to be put on that lot that's, that's put, put there. Nothing seems on the, on the side setbacks, good. It's just a front setback from 35 to 25, which is right. But yeah, I think, is there any questions for Mr. Durkin?
I have not at this time.
I'd like to ask, is, you say that there's the potential that there might be another lawsuit from another rebuttal? That's potentially there?
No, not, not, not based on this, because the, the only, the only plaintiffs that are part of this litigation process were those who joined in the lawsuit, which had to be filed within, within a, a certain amount of time. And so, and any other neighbors foreclosed from, from appealing what the, what the board last granted, which was, you know, what's, what the first site plan is. Now, we have a set, we have a settlement here. And this settlement is between and among the plaintiffs who filed the appeal with the land court and their plaintiffs of record and the defendant who is the applicant's. And, and those are the only parties to this litigation. And, and this settlement agreement is only between and among those parties.
Okay, so if we vote to accept the changes to the original, then that will end it as far as we're concerned?
That would be my view. My, my view would be that if, if anyone had any objections to this building going forward and, and to the plan that was approved by the zoning board last, last June, they had a chance to appeal that and become plaintiffs in this litigation. And, you know, only, I think there's only six people who did that. So, you know, they have, they have a right to speak on this and they already spoke through their attorneys. And through their attorneys, they came up with this settlement plan, with this, with, with this settlement that was negotiated.
And tell us, I have the, I have these and we're going to mail them out to you?
I got, we got them. I got them this morning.
Well, they were emailed.
Yeah, yeah. The question I had is if, if we made an adjustment and we voted it tonight, would somebody come back and file another suit on what we're voting on tonight? And then it would be never-ending.
But it's a 25-foot, it's still in the parameter, really, of exactly putting a single residence on there with the right dimensionals. There was no change in relief.
Right.
So we didn't change, we didn't give them a variance for any, any dimensional relief. What we did is we split the lot and said they could put a house on, on there. And they would keep all the setbacks and buy rights to build. If I'm not mistaken, that's what we did.
Again, where I'm confused is that if we vote on it tonight, we're subject to the date, to somebody filing an appeal on what we voted on tonight.
Now, I, I think that would be a hard one to prove. I mean, it's from 35 to 25 feet. Nothing changed as far as the laws are concerned on that property. Place in a house, they put a 35 or 25, yeah. Yeah, they could put a 25. And that's what the neighbors wanted. They wanted it up further instead of them putting it back. That was the agreement they come up with. But they still get their side setbacks and rear setbacks. Proper. So if you guys, did everyone get this in the, in an email?
Yeah.
Did everyone else going to vote tonight for five?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, we didn't know if Jeff was here, but we have five, five that are here right now. So that's what we could do. We could do this if you wanted to. If not, if you want to wait till the hard copy comes, we can put this off to the 23rd and we can vote on it. It'll be the first thing. I'm just, this is your decisions as a board. It's all of us are going to vote on, do we want to move this forward for two weeks? And do you want to vote on it tonight? Either or, it will be dealt with at the latest, the 23rd.
No, I'm comfortable.
Is anyone else? Mr. Himmel?
I'm comfortable, Marty.
Okay. Cavais?
I, I'm, yes. Let's vote.
Mr. Chin?
Ready to go forward.
Okay. All right. All right.
My, my, Chairman Akins, I would, I would recommend that if the board is disposed to approve this tonight, that they, they approve the granting of a variance with the changes as reflected in the settlement agreement. And they, and the board should make the settlement agreement and the, and the new site plan part of, part of its, part of its revised decision. It's amended decision.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Very good. Any other questions?
Nope.
Nope. Durkin, thank you for your time. I appreciate you. I know, I know you could be home somewhere, but you're here working again another night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cavais, if we could, I think we all understand what's going on here. We're going to make an amendment to this.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend our decision, putting into that new decision.
Backwards from, from legal. From 35 to 25 feet. Is there anyone in this that's here tonight want to say anything on this? Is anyone wants to speak? Because we are changing it from 35 to 25. If you could raise your hand or give me a...
25 to 35, is that the side or the front?
It's the frontage. Front setback.
Not seeing any virtual hand raised. You need to use a virtual hand raise. It's in the participant list. If you're calling in, it's star nine. Or just turn your screen on and wave at us. Not seeing anybody.
Do I have a motion, Mr. Bass, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Amendment number 20-10. John Mackey.
Along with somebody waving?
Go ahead, make the motion, please.
Okay. Amendment number 20-10. John Jett T. Mackey and Deborah Heath Mackey for variance to re-divise the lot into two lots and construct a single-family home on a newly created lot on the premises number 93 Grand View Ave. I make a motion to amend our prior decision of incorporating the agreement between the parties in the litigation and by putting in and approving the new site plan that was approved by the bodies.
That seconded?
Seconded.
All right, before we vote, someone had their hand up, wants to say a few words on this. Paul, Paul Carberry.
Oh, yes, sir, thank you. I just have a quick question. Could you just clarify, please, the change, the 35 and the 25? Is that 25 or 35 feet back from the street? I mean, it's not 100% clear on that.
Yes, yes, back from the street, from the sidewalk. Where their property line is, their house going 25 feet, not 35 feet back.
So it'll be closer to the street, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Madam Clerk, could we have a voice vote, please?
Yes. Martin Akins?
Yes.
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Further on to tonight's business. Case number ZBA 2076, Bonnie Tan for a variance to construct a two-and-a-half-story, two-unit townhouse on the premise number 44 Prospect. Is the applicant a representative here? You have, you have the floor and want to tell us the changes that we asked for and what you've done.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Tan. On behalf of JCPT Architect, representing the owner, Ms. Chan, on this project. I'm going to share the screen.
Be all set, go ahead now.
Okay, I have narrowed the width of the building and creating a 12-foot driveway on the left side. So this Prosper Hill Street is over here. And down the street, take a left. And I shrink this side from, originally was, I cut it back three feet. It was nine feet setback, side yard setback on this side. Now it's 12, sorry, 13. So a 12-feet driveway coming down to the rear. There's two outdoor parking. And we have added the two garage parking space, one each unit. And the total width of the building right now is from 31, now it's 28 feet wide. And we have added planting in the front, one of the building. And this is the ground floor with a living space, partial living space and a one-car garage. The second floor is a family room and a kitchen with a full bath. The third floor is two-bedroom and one-bath. We changed it to a mansard roof. That's the side. The rear. We changed the siding from vinyl to hardy plank. And that's about it.
Which, I'm looking for the dimensions. It was eight feet on one side. What did you change that to?
Uh, which dimension?
Dimension's on your driveway. Get 13 feet on that side and the other side now.
Let me pull up.
What do you have?
So 13 on the driveway side, side yard setback. The other side, we kept it as original nine feet. The first submission was at nine feet.
Why, what, what? Why did you keep it nine feet?
You made three feet small on the other side.
Yeah, we made three feet, uh, we cut three feet out on the building to put the driveway in on this side.
Right, instead of having all, all the park cars out front.
Right.
Paid the whole backyard, the whole side, correct?
Yep.
What do you have in there? What is it going to be?
Uh...
Asphalt?
The driveway?
Yeah.
Asphalt.
You're going to asphalt that whole thing and then asphalt your whole backyard.
You can do some imperious pavers on the back.
Doing previous pavers from the, from the house back.
In the back, in the back.
The toe back, yes.
Yeah.
And one strip of, one strip of asphalt down the side.
Yeah, just the driveway.
All pavers. That's, that's like, there's no way I'd be in favor of that. It's like, it's just, I mean, it's, we do that, we just ruin this. We really do. We turn it, turn it homes into parking lots. And if you get a lot that's small, maybe you could build a single-family house. I just, I just, that's the way it is. That's really the way it is. That's the way I look at it. It's like, you know, for me, it's just you're asking for too much, really. I thought we were going to shrink this down, have at least 13 feet on each side. Try to put the lot there, do the best you can. But that's just my two cents. Anyone else? Mr. Cavais, you're up.
Well, I'm, I'm happy that we got rid of, not got rid of, but we changed one bedroom. I do like the fact the cars aren't there in the front. I think it looks kind of nice, but we have the landscaping there. But I also take into consideration of your comments, Mr. Chairman. And that there is a lot of driveway. And there is, you know, not much of a backyard there. We have a front yard, but we don't have a backyard.
Yeah.
So I look at it as the front yard, at least, as something that the neighbors have to see. It's a little bit of a nicer seat, some street skates in and out.
Right, right.
So it's more a statement than a question, I guess, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, and maybe if they did, they did pavers there, it would look so much better. But instead of really, I would love to see that all pavers. I mean, now you, you get in a bigger house for a lot that that's small. They can put pavers in there, make it a really beautiful-looking house around a big stretch of hog.
I agree, I agree. If that approves the landscaping, we can adjust that to have it all pavers.
Yeah. I'd be in favor of that, okay.
Okay.
Bass, I don't know, any other comments?
That's all I have now, sir.
All right. So Brian, comments?
I, I agree with your assessment. I'd like to see pavers instead of asphalt up there.
Yeah, it'll look nice.
I'd like to see pavers as well, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Himmel. Uh, I got a letter here from the DPW. Date of February 2nd, 2021, 44 Prospect Street, Quincy, case number ZBA 2076. Revisit the above records comments are as follows. Specify how much impervious area will be increased through the development. Provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utilities and grading. Plan how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Upon completion of project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints needs to be submitted along with digital files. Is anything else, please? Yeah. Is there anyone in favor of this proposal? Anyone in favor?
We did have, we did have an Andy Billiard send me a question over the chat. If you want me to bring it up.
What is?
Hi, I just had a quick question on if this was going to be proposed as rental units or owner-occupied housing.
I thought there were two-and-a-half condos. Weren't you building condos here?
These two, I believe, are condos. They're not for rent.
Okay.
No rent condos. Uh, is there anyone else wants to?
John Rotafeld.
Anyone else? John?
Oh, wait a minute.
John, ring in.
John, you swear to the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth, I hope you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
John Rotafeld, 62 Grumwall Road. I'm in favor of it. I just wanted to make sure they were going to use hardy plank pavers. No, I was making a joke. I'm in...
Yeah, yeah, we got it.
We got you.
It's Zoom, you know?
Is there anyone else like speaking favor? Second call?
Um, I want to, sorry, I, there were about three or four signatures in favor from abutters. And the signature were submitted to Noreen from the last meeting.
Oh, were they written to the record at the last meeting?
They must have been.
I emailed it to Noreen.
All right, she's looking now, hold on. Anyone else? Second call? In favor?
Not seeing anyone.
I recall that part of the hearing closed. Those three people will be in favor, will be written in here. So anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone opposed or undecided? First call?
Not seeing any hands.
Third call? All that part of the hearing closed. All right, Mr. Cavais, grab a motion, please, with the changes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Amendment number 20-76. Bonnie Tan for a variance to construct a two-and-a-half-story, two-unit townhouse on the premises number 44 Prospect Hill Street. I make a motion to grant the variance on the option of the, on the consideration that there'll be pavers instead of asphalt for use for the parking in your driveway.
Seconded. Uh, could I have a voice vote, Madam Chair?
Martin Akins?
Yes.
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Instead of asphalt all the way.
The end career area?
Yes, all the way. Folks, anywhere there's asphalt, it's now pavers. Moving down on the whole business, case number ZBA 2074. Michael Hearn for variance sign and rebuild the home that was destroyed in 2015 storm on the premise number 84 Prospect Hill Road. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes, Michael Hearn, yeah.
Mike?
Yes, I'm here.
You have the floor. Why don't you explain what you want to do with the home down there?
So the home belongs to Karen Albany. She was an unfortunate victim of the storm of 2015, which washed through her home. And as we, as a result of the insurance adjusted that she hired, it passed away in the middle of her negotiations with FEMA. It took quite a bit of time for her to settle with FEMA. In moving forward to rebuild the home, she wants to build on the same footprint, but she wants to raise it up high enough so that she doesn't get flooded out again. And the way we created that was to build right on the existing foundation but raise it up to create a parking area under the house. The, the house will be consistent with the finishes and the size of what she currently had.
Right. I mean, this thing's only like 15, nine across, correct?
Correct.
They're going on the same footprint. Thanks, Madam Court. Are there any questions in the board? I don't have any questions. I see exactly what you did there. And I believe. Be a nice project, a brand new home in the same footprint with the parking, I like. I know, counsel, I'll get right to you. Anyone from the board have any questions of the, uh, applicant?
I do not.
I do not. I have one question.
To end?
Yeah, regarding the, the height of the building, I know you're gonna go over thirty-five, but, um, you're going up forty-two four. Um, just wondering, do you need that much above the thirty-five to get this project done?
Um, I think what the, the engineer's concern was if we had a flat roof, it would be too much load on a building that narrow. And that the gable, the gable roof would help, uh, stabilize the building for wind load.
Are you putting mechanicals in the attic?
We are. It'll be part of the split system, um, for the, for the second floor heating and cooling.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I give you strokes, eight. Now, I know. First floor sixteen nine. Twenty-nine thirty-five at the roof, then you get the peak. This, then you realize this. What's gonna bind this? Yeah, what's the height of these ceilings here?
Then, uh, uh, just under nine feet, eight foot eleven.
You know, why, 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 why are you doing that when you're up to thirty-five, forty-four feet? I mean, I thought that, I just looked at it quick. I, I didn't think you were. Building the stories all, all that big. Why can't they be eight feet? Bring it down three feet.
Uh, I, I, I didn't.
I know it's first floor sixteen nine, right? What's the, uh?
No, so, so that's, no, the first floor is not sixteen nine. Actually, the forty-two feet is total off of the slab elevation of seven foot three. The slab elevation, that's not the correct height.
Thirty-five two?
That's correct. It's, it's, it's seven foot three less that. It's thirty-five foot four, uh, thirty-five foot one inch. To the peak of the roof from grade. The grade is established by the old basement.
Right, right. Right. That's fine, yeah. Grade is seven four, alright. Okay, I feel better now. Look at this. Forty-four. Where, where is that? How do you get forty-four?
You're correct. I'm sorry about that.
Alright, note is corrected. Any other questions?
Nope, you just answered mine.
Okay, uh. I have, uh. Anyone want to, oh, Counselor McCarthy, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chief Calwatt, one one counsel, always at our meetings.
Um, I just, I'm glad that Karen, uh, Albany finally, we got there. Um, she was, uh. Really, uh, they all took a pounding down there, but, but Karen, uh, was right out in that, in that section where it's wide open in front of the, the city owned land. Coming over Post Island and, and her home was completely destroyed. So, I'm, I'm in full support and, 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 um. I'm really excited that she's gonna be getting, uh, back into her home after, uh. After three years. So, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Is there anyone wanna speak in favor? Anybody? Wanna speak in favor? First call?
Use the virtual hand raise or turn your screen on and wave.
Second call? John, you're slipping.
Not seeing anything.
Third call, all that part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here. Date of January fourth, twenty twenty-one, eighty-four Post Island Road, case number ZBA twenty seventy-four. We reviewed the above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. Specify how much impervious area will be increased through the development. Provide plans showing the layout of utility and grading. Free upon completion of this project as built plans showing all utilities, building footprints needs to be, needs to be submitted. Anything further is required, please advise. Thank you. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
Not seeing anybody.
Third call, hand raise, anything, nothing, okay. All that part of the hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cabeas, comments?
You go in favor.
Likewise. So Brian, Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
Himmel?
In favor.
Grab a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the matter number twenty dash seventy-six, Bonnie Tan for eight, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I am right. No, I'm the wrong way, sorry.
Seventy-four.
Forty, number seventy-four, Michael Hearn for a variance fighting to rebuild the home that was destroyed in the twenty fifteen storm on the premise number eighty-four Post Island Road. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
You have a, Madam Chair, Madam, uh, Clark, can we have a voice vote?
Yes, Martin Agen?
Yes.
Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Why do you wanna let Mr. Frank go in? That's what I'm doing right now. Uh, Mr. Himmel?
I'll go out.
You wanna go out?
Well, I'll go out if you, you wanna let him in.
Well, I'm gonna let him in. It's just, you know, you're, you're sitting, Gordon, man. Mr. Like the Himmel, you wanna sit out?
I'll, I'll, I'll go out.
Alright, Mr. Himmel's out, Mr. Frankel is in. On the new business, case number ZBA twenty eighty-five, exactly what I was gonna do, Mr. Brian, thank you. Kevin Taylor for variance to remove existing deck, replace it with two story addition on the premise number sixty-five Park Brook Street. Quincy is the African representative here.
Go ahead. Yes, yeah, yes, Gary Trungon.
You have the floor, Gary.
I wanna replace an existing deck using basically the same footprint to extend the kitchen.
Why are you coming up? Are you on the phone?
Uh, I've, I've never been in a Zoom meeting before. I gotta be honest with you.
Are you on the phone?
I'm on a computer. I'm trying to, like, system was trying to bring it up for us.
Alright, let it go, Brian, I can't. If you have any set of plans you wanna put on there, we can give you the screen.
Yep, she's, she's trying.
Maybe that white, night, night. Trying to get him on. I know, I know. Alright, why don't you explain? Go ahead, explain what you wanna do.
What you wanna do? Alright, so basically there's an existing deck on the back of the house.
Yep.
Where it makes it so that there's more coverage on the lot than you guys expected, but it's there. We wanted to use the same space to extend a kitchen and a dining area. But, uh, get a, a bathroom. Second story deck can extend the rooms upstairs.
What are you doing upstairs?
Um, it's a, there's gonna be a dressing room and a proposed, um, and a proposed open deck, well, proposed deck with a roof over it.
On one half?
Yep, if you look on the, uh.
Can I see? Yep.
Yep, so you can see that there's the new dressing room area.
Yep.
Proposed deck on the, on the ocean side, basically.
Okay.
That's pretty much what we're looking to do.
Alright. Thank you very much. Any questions? I know I did, just so everyone knows, the counselor called, uh, the commissioner. He just wanted to let, let us know that he's in favor of this project. So I'll just let it be known, cause I guess he couldn't log on from where he is. He's in Florida having a grand old time. Don't wanna be sitting in a meeting and I don't blame him sometimes, huh? But he did call in and let the commissioner know he's in favor. Does there anyone have any questions to the applicants?
I have none.
I, I'd like to know the, um, the length of the existing deck, if that's possible.
Yeah, it, it's like. Eight feet or something in the back.
It's bigger than the addition, right?
No, it's the same, same thing. It's the same, that's exactly what the deck is. They're going, they're gonna take down the deck. And put that. Put that one as an addition, same exact size.
See, there's no, what it is, is there's no distances on the plan that shows the existing deck. That's it thrown.
Got a little, got the stairs, stairs on the back. That are going up. Now that's gonna go, they're having like. You'll see it on the, uh.
The slashes on the plot plan are basically showing where the existing deck was and the new addition is, that they overlay on each other.
And he's got a proposed deck in the back there, put the bathroom, right? And the other piece of the deck in the back. Get them set of plans, it should be right back.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Anyone else? Questions? The applicant? Done here.
No questions.
All that part of the hearing closed. DPW letter. Uh, I have a letter here dated January twenty-second, uh, case number ZBA twenty eighty-five. We reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call?
No hands being shown.
Second call? Third call? All that part of the hearing closed. Yeah, he's taking down his, uh. His, his deck that's there and he's making more livable space and he's putting a little half deck upstairs with another room there. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cabeas?
I'll be voting in favor.
So Brian?
Yes, I, that's a beautiful property. I've been by there a number of times and it's really maintained beautifully and I expect it'll be, continue to be that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
Frankel? I'm in favor as well. Grab a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the matter number twenty dash eighty-five, Kevin Taylor for a variance to remove the existing deck and replace it with a two story addition on the premises number four, Appleforth Street. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Second.
Second, uh. Madam Clark, can we have a voice vote, please?
Yes, Martin Agen?
Yes.
Michael Bayes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes. The next, the next, ten twenty-six C Street. There's a few little things we gotta talk about, uh, that just came in. Uh, Counselor, are you here? Dave McCarthy?
Unmute yourself, Dave.
Dave, unmute yourself, come on in. Before I, uh, before we do ZBA twenty eighty-eight, Paul, Paul Pinto for variance to construct an addition on Prop ten twenty-six C Street. Uh, Counselor, why don't you say a few words about what's going on there and that little strip of property that's in the middle there?
Yeah, I'll try to do it justice. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. So, at ten twenty-six, um, sits right on C Street at the corner of Darrow and C, right across the Most Blessed Sacrament Church. And, uh, Mr. Paul Pinto has a beautiful home. Um, Mr. Pinto owns, um, a very sizable lot and has added to it. Uh, in regards to a parcel of, I believe, twenty-three hundred or so square feet. That he is, um, in the process of purchasing. Um. To put on the proposed addition that you guys can see, uh, outlined in, um. In blue.
Right.
Um, it lines up to a, what is a public way. On the printout, it says public way, and that was one of the things that myself and city solicitor Jim Timmons went back and forth on. Uh, over several meetings, uh, a few with Mr. Pinto, and I've had a few meetings with the neighbors that. What are the public way, um, on Wintrop Lane to the left? Um, that is a public way that leads into Manet Lake. Which is the old, um. Lake area behind the fire station where ice skating used to happen. It's actually.
Yeah, it's a hundred fourteen, right?
Yeah, it's actually on record as, um, Nordstrom Park. We looked at some nineteen twenty-six maps, but. That's a public way that leads in there, and that'll remain. Um, to the left of that is a one foot strip.
Right.
Uh, area of about a hundred and sixty square feet, um. That is also connected to that parcel. If this all goes through. Um, the parcel I mentioned that had twenty-three hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm.
You can see in the public way, a, um. A fence. It's that line that, that's kind of jagged in there.
Yeah.
Um, and the fence went in way back when, um, I believe Sean Farrell. The contractor and developer developed that area, which was part of the, um, Blessed Sacrament Rectory. That fence was in a long time ago, um. When Wintrop Lane was created. It's as if on the public way. It's not bothering the city at all. We'll probably never go down that public way and go into Manet Lake. But that's still gonna be city on land and a public way that leads into that large parcel called Manet Lake. Um, there's questions, and I guess I, I sat with the neighbors. Uh, on Wintrop Lane, I also several times and spoke to them several times and talked to Mr. Pinto, who's at ten twenty-six. Um, to try to make sure everybody was on the same sheet of music in regards to what to do with that fence, because. That does preclude Mr. Pinto to get to that one foot strip. I, um, I think, uh, Mr. Timmons referred to it as a spite line that was put in, um. Back when they developed. So, I have some concerns. I. I have some concerns just with the overall flow of that neighborhood, the neighbors in Wintrop Lane, the moving of the fence. Um, Mr. Pinto has a beautiful addition, and Mr. Pinto does his homework. He's looking for relief. Um, coming up to the, the border of the public way. Uh, but I still have concern and I still think there's some concern with the neighbors in Wintrop Lane. And possibly Mr. Pinto, that they haven't gotten together to solve that fence area. So, I know it's not in the mix on the paperwork tonight. I know it's the proposed addition. But if it goes through tonight and the other side of that public way, that one foot strip. If there's not a solution or an agreement, and Mr. Pinto leaves it the way it is. Or Mr. Pinto starts to talk about moving fences, there's gonna be a lot of confusion there. Down the road, and I'm trying to just. Figure out how to clean it up, but, um, I, I didn't wanna get too much into it, Mr. Chairman, tonight, because.
I, I know.
I know the addition was what was on the table for Mr. Pinto.
Right, but there is a one foot strip here that he wants to get to and it's his, and now there's fences there and all that. What I'd like to see is that this goes. Maybe, maybe we can do this. I'll let the applicant speak, but, uh. Maybe we can get that weird away first, and if you can have that worked out with the city solicitor and the neighbors, maybe it'll take us thirty days, but let's speak to the, uh, applicant first. Uh. Where are you?
Right here, Mr. Chairman. How are you today?
Good.
So, I, I also have my architect on the line. I'll let him speak to the project itself, but I, I did wanna.
Why are you coming up?
You don't see me coming up?
Well, I got, I got you there, but why don't you come right up on the big screen? Go ahead.
I, I don't know. I can't, I can't attest to that. So, um. First, I, I wanted to address two points and then also give you guys an idea of my project, right? So, let, let me give you some backstory of myself. I, I moved to the neck back in two thousand and three. I purchased, when I purchased this property, a, a, as Councilman David said earlier. We were abutting to the Most Blessed Sacrament Rectory back in, uh, I believe in the oh eight or so, that, that moved over and was split up and subdivided. And, and then since then has built out a, a couple of pieces behind, uh, parcels behind us, beautiful homes. Very enabling people, right? We, we've actually interacted. We, we always wave over the, over the fence and such. But, um, what, what we, what, what I will address on, uh, is that, per that fence that Councilman, uh, David just said a moment ago. That, that was not erected during the subdivision. That was actually, uh, recently put in by, by our neighbors, and I wanna say that was probably in the last two years, right? And, and that, as you, you mentioned earlier, did not follow the, the property line, but that's neither here nor there. With regard to the addition, I, I, I also wanted to, to give you guys a reason why we're going about this, right? So, so you have a little bit of backstory, understand who I am and where I'm coming from. As I said, moved to the neck in two thousand and three, have never looked back. I come, I mean, go, and, and I really enjoy living here. Um, since then, my family has grown. Uh, I've got two four-year-old twins that attend Snug Harbor and will soon be attending right across the street here, uh, at Hausneck, right? Um, not only that, I, I've, I've got an aging mother, you know, and I think she's on the line, and she won't like the words that I just said, she's aging, but, but I've got. I, I, I've got. I, I, I've gotta account for someday, you know, what do I, how do I make sure my mother has the best of, of what can come to her, right? And so, the reason we're looking for addition is because we do have a growing family. We do have a large extended family and I have an aging parent that I wanna make sure that we have space for. That's the reason, that's what we addressed. Um, we also have on this corner, I think you mentioned in previous, previous sessions, you live here in the neck. You know, coming around this corner, the corner lot is a very blinding corner to go around.
Yep.
Brutal, right? And, and not only that, we've got neighbors that have even told us that they won't even cross the street over here because of that blinding corner and they don't trust cars coming around. One of our intentions with the expansion is to also clean that up so you can see around, to improve that, that, that you have done on the property as it is today.
Who's dog is that? Charlie, get your dog.
Making my dog bark.
Oh.
So, so Counselman, you know, with regard to the reasoning for the project, I wanted to lay that out. And then with regard to, uh, any specifics about that, I, I would implore my, my architect to jump in and he can answer any of your technical questions or, or what's being sought after, um, in terms of a variance here.
Have you talked to them about the fence at all?
We, we have, right? So, and I, I've spoken to the neighbor and there was this confusion about was the fence on private or public property? Right, and, and, and as Councilman David earlier said, there is a, there is a piece of, of land that also was going across, that fence crosses. Right, and, and when I spoke to my neighbor last, they said, once that was rectified, they understood that that would, and they wouldn't have a problem of the fence being put onto it. It's correct markation, right?
So, do you, are you buying that one-foot strip to?
Both, both pieces.
Okay.
And then the, the other thing, uh, Councilman Dave, I think you're still there, when we last had discussed, right, and I, I have the messages. I believe our understanding was that, that it, it was, it was still a private way, it wasn't a public way, it had public easement rights that, that the fence crossed over private land and was intruding into the, into the easement of the, uh, of that.
Yeah, uh, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Mr. Timmons dug deeper and deeper as we got into documents that were very old that said private and public and private and public and came back with me recently, as I knew this was coming up, I went back again and, and did my homework and said, Jim, I wanna hear this one more time and, um, Mr. Chang, who's an engineer, who does great work down at the DPW, came back with public. So, the private word went out the window again and we were back to public and I believe, Mr. Timmons has, um, the necessary information that it is a Quincy like public right-of-way into Manet Lake.
But you have ways to that.
There were a lot of things written back and forth that contradicted each other, but the last time I was with Jim, which was, um, late last week, talking about this as it was coming up, it's a public, a public way and, um, and then I wanted to bring up that, that one-foot strip and that, um, that fence that, I don't know if it was two years or five years or when, whenever it went there, but the fence that the cul-de-sac had put up that was just sitting on the public way,
Yeah.
doing really nothing, um, you know, but the spite line, um, that Jim refers to and Mr. Pinto talks about that he'll purchase with the other parcel, um, plays into this whole fence moving and that's why I tried to, I tried to get the neighbors together to figure it out so it wouldn't disrupt their world over there.
When, when is this, when's this gonna be done, the, the buying of the property?
I don't, uh, we're just waiting for approval of all the permitting. That's the, uh, that's per the agreement.
Your agreement is per approval, if we don't approve it, you don't buy it?
That's the case with, that I have agreement with, uh, yes.
Yeah, I know, but why, I mean, why would you want the land anyway, you're gonna, you're gonna do something.
Well, well, I, I, I will answer that, Mr. Timmons, right? According to the setback, there, there is, that land becomes unusable, right? There's no offer to do it without approval, so.
Right. Right. Exactly. Uh, alright. You know what? Let's hear the case. Go ahead, put, put this case, this case on.
Hey, good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you have, you have, you have the floor.
Thank you, I've got, Ben, Mr. Burr, my architect, will, will provide you this, this on case there.
Go, Burr?
Good evening and thank you for, uh, inviting us um, here. This is a site plan, um, for the proposed addition and, uh, you can see in blue, that's the footprint of the addition.
Yeah.
Uh, the line here is the current, uh, property line and it is one piece of, uh, one parcel that, uh, Mr. Pinto is, uh, contemplating purchasing and here is this, uh, one-foot strap on the left. Uh, looking at it in terms of the, you know, planning of the site, there's really one place on the site to construct an addition and it's where we've put it right this corner, there's, uh, a marsh and sensitive uh, environment that we don't want to get near it and we don't want to disturb. Uh, right here, there's an existing driveway that we want to remain. And, uh, and this is the addition that we're proposing, it's, uh, uh, in terms of its, uh, its planning, its architecture, this is uh, a lower level, which is, uh, below grade at the front, but, uh, walks out to the rear yard because of the topography of the site. Uh, it's just a basement with, uh, uh, some utility laundry bathroom and a, uh, an exercise workout room. Uh, at the ground level, we're going to relocate the entry to the house, which currently is right in the middle of the existing house, we're going to put it right here, going to construct a, um, bay window where the, uh, indoor currently stands. We're going to create a new living room, um, which is going to have, um, double height base in it, opening to the, uh, rear yard. Uh, and right here is going to be a, uh, it's a second uh, master or a guest suite, which as Mr. Pinto just explained, uh, one possible use is for an aging, uh, aging family member, uh, because it's, it doesn't require going up or downstairs. And it has a bedroom and a bathroom, it's laid out in such a way that, uh, it could be used by, uh, others on this floor if this suite is not occupied. And then there's a, um, uh, a stair going up to a loft area, so right here, this is open to below. Right here, there's, uh, a loft area, uh, under the eaves of the roof of, uh, for a home office and, uh, study. Uh, this is, uh, a quick, quick um, rendering of what it would look like from, uh, from the street. The addition is on the left. Here is the bay window that's proposed. Uh, the gray, uh, structure is existing, the olive structure here is the proposed addition. And I, um, I'll also add that we are in the process of, uh, filing a notice of intent for a, uh, conservation commission, uh, review and approval
Mm-hmm.
right now, so, uh, some aspects of the site design and so much of management are still, you know, you know, pending that process.
Right.
Here we are.
And it's gonna clean up that corner too, so you're gonna have, he's gonna take away some of that stuff too, that'd be kinda
Chairman, I, I'm going, my intent is to, to make it open, open lawn so you can see around there, right? We might have a half-height fence just to make sure that the kids don't get into the street, but it would be clear line of sight around the corner.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I think it also plays well into with, with what's going on here in the, in the, in the ward, right, with the intention of switching around Le Breck Field.
Yep.
You know, so, so I think it'll play around nice with the neighborhood as well.
Nice. Yeah, that's beautiful, beautiful home.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, I mean, Mr. uh, Cavais, questions?
I, well, I, I have to say I'm a little confused by what, uh, Counselor McCarthy was saying. Um, so, what I see in the plan that I have as his private way, maybe a public way, is that what, uh, the applicant is trying to buy?
He's gonna buy it, it's gonna be unused land. It's that one foot, that one-foot place, see how that, number one, if that's a public way, that fence can't go on it, number one, any.
Right.
See, it's right there, you can't build fences on, on, on public, private, I mean, public ways. A private way, it depends who owns it.
Wash it all down. But why, why are we?
There's, there's a one-foot piece of property after that.
Then why is he buying that if it's not even connected to his property?
Cause he wants the whole thing to be wide open. Him own it, no one can go in it. You know, just be wide open space cause it'll look like it's his property and it's bigger and it's, and it's for public use, but they'll never use.
And who's, and who's, who's selling it?
SPS, SPS.
Who are they?
They, they are a partnership, uh, uh, I would say.
I don't see that, I don't see it in any of these plans, that's why I'm asking. I'm not sure what we're doing here today. I'm not sure McCarthy wants us to do, I just thought we would do an addition.
Yeah, Mr. Cavais, if, if I can help clarify a few points, right?
They're gonna have to work out the logistics on their private way and that fence piece, that's what Mr. Mr. McCarthy was talking about, let them figure out that little piece one, cause they don't get it, it don't get squared away and he's gonna have to come back to us and figure out something else.
Yeah, so, so, Mr. Cavais, if I can just help clarify one piece, right? When you look at the site plan, there's two, there's a, there's a lot A, I believe.
I see, parcel one.
Parcel one and lot six, correct? Thank you, Benny, I appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I see that now.
The acquisition is of parcel one and parcel, the owners of parcel one and lot six are selling it jointly. It's, that's the deal that they sell, right?
Right.
So?
And that one-foot line goes with, correct?
Correct, correct.
So, you don't own parcel one?
That is under agreement, pending on approval.
Okay, okay, I understand, alright, I'm fine, okay, alright, thank you. I'm, I'm, okay.
Then they can work that out if they don't, they don't get, they gotta come back and do something else or whatever they're gonna have to do, have to figure that out. But I think, I think, like, you know, the counselor said, it's gonna try to get this all worked out so everyone has what they want, it's gonna look beautiful there and it's gonna even help the traffic looking down the street.
Shouldn't we be talking about this after that happens?
But it doesn't matter, it's like, it's like the sale of a house, we get, we give people that are buying a house, putting up an addition, they get the permit with the house when they buy it. We've done that many a time.
But, but usually, when someone's doing that, the person who comes to us either is, is working with the seller or is the seller, I mean.
In other words, in other words, here's, here's what I think, I think what the applicant's saying. If this don't get approved, I ain't buying this property, cause
Well, I understand that. I, I understand that, but I'm just concerned, you know, with it.
Well, the only reason I said let's go through this, because if it does, if they don't own the property, they can't get a building permit, right?
So, so, uh,
I'm trying to think, Mr. McCarthy's trying to work this out, he says he's got the approval or he doesn't have the approval. We'll know tonight if he has the approval and then they can go work on that end to try to get that deal made and that one-foot strip done with the public way, so the city has a right to go through that, you know, the open space.
Yeah, so, so one more item, I believe, uh, Mr. Cavais and, and, and Councilman. Um, I, 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 I believe, uh, the, the folks that are selling it have spoken with Mr. Duca, who might be on the line, and have, have also given their, that they'd like to, to disperse and, and be out of it, the ownership or, or tax implications of this land.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay.
So, their, their, their interest is to, is to sell for this project to go forward. Right?
Okay, thank you.
My, my pleasure, anytime.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, again, the, the issue with that is, is that if we, if we had seen the original subdivision plan of that area in there,
Yep.
you, you know, that's, that's what I've been calling for, I, I, I understand that that would be a public way where it leads to the lake. That's, that's standard, the rest of it is, that's immaterial to us.
Right.
I would have preferred that, that they own this land before we approve it, but if it's a condition on it, then I'm not gonna have a problem agreeing to it. So.
And, and Mr. O'Brien, one, one more thing, Mr. O'Brien, the, the site survey that you're seeing, I believe is built upon what was also in the subdivision, I'm, I'm more than happy to supply the subdivision plan that was done when they subdivided.
Yeah, we were on the board when that happened. So, Paul, do me a favor. Hold up.
Oh, anytime, sir.
Okay, now, Mr. Chin?
Yes, a question, um, my, on my plan, it says private way and everyone is talking about a public way, is it, is the private way now a public way?
That's what they're saying, a public way when they look back in the documents and they're gonna have to work that all out and figure this, figure this all out. And if they don't have that land, they can't get a permit any. You know what I mean?
Is, does the applicant intend to, uh, create, uh, or construct a fence along that one-foot strip?
No, that, I believe, I believe that the fences, there are the neighbors' fences would be on, on that, I don't, I don't intend to instruct, construct.
My concern would be that if a fence is constructed on the one-foot strip, then no one's gonna use the public way because it's gonna look like it's part of your land.
Yeah. I, I don't believe anybody uses that public way as it is today.
I have it seen today, but tomorrow could be different.
Yeah.
Paul, he's not saying that, what he's saying is if you put a, if you put a three-foot fence or four-foot fence across that whole piece when you buy it, no one gets to use that public road. They have to walk around. Except for you.
I, I don't intend to put any,
It's fair even.
I, I don't intend to put any fencing.
Counselor, you might wanna put something in there when you do this and look at it. Like, if that's gonna be a, a, a public way, there'll be no fence on that side, so the other people can get on that land too.
Can I, can I jump in for a second, Marty?
Yes.
It's okay. I'd like to wait and talk with Jim and get together one more time with the neighbors and Mr. Pinto and have us draw up something that's very clear. I mean, I know it's a public way, but I'm concerned also, you know, um, I was hoping there was gonna be an agreement between Mr. Pinto and the neighbors on leaving that fence alone or modifying that fence or, um, coming to an agreement, um, with some conditions, but I, and again, I'm just, um,
If that's a public way, that fence can't be on it anywhere. I mean, there's no way.
Right, but I'm just saying that, that if there's, could be some modification, when I talked to Jim Timmons about it, Jim Timmons was talking to me and saying that we possibly could adjust the fence so the neighbors would work together and it wouldn't disrupt Wintrop Lane, so I'm trying to make everybody happy, I guess. But right now, um, right now, there's confusion.
Here's what I wanna do, if you will.
How to go about handling it.
Counselor, Counselor, here's what I wanna do, I wanna go through this hearing, then we're gonna put it off till we have a purchase and sales agreement. Let's get through the hearing. We'll get to the end, we'll put off our vote until they come back with a purchase and sales. Alright, fair enough.
And I'll talk to Jim Timmons also about something to add to this.
Right, and, and there'll be no fence, if that public way is, is public, then it has to stay a public way and it can't be no fences across the other property either. That's all gonna have to be in there too. So, we'll have all that done and, and I'll write my notes here to make sure they're done on that P and S before we, uh, before we get that now.
They do have a P and S.
Yeah, but, but it's not what, it's not what I agree to or anyone I think in his room would agree to about certain things. Paul, I'll get back to you, is there any other questions?
I got
Mr. Chin? Oh.
No other questions.
I've, I've got, just, I wanna get clarification. If they do purchase parcel one, then does that eliminate the request for relief on the frontage? I'm trying to figure out where the seventy feet ends.
Yes.
By, by picking up parcel eight, is that extended past the required eighty-five? I think I'm kinda asking Paul that.
Uh, let me address that, uh, I don't believe we have a problem with the, uh, with the frontage because we have, we're gonna plant your frontage as is on this hot
Oh, right, right, right.
It goes all the way to here. The relief we're seeking here is a side yard. And by acquiring.
The six-point-six feet.
That's correct.
All right, so just that spot by the, by what's called the private way, that's public. All right, I understand, thank you.
Not two, no. No, we don't. Why? Because of public, uh, private way? No, it's a public way, okay, it's public, if, if, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right.
But either way, it would be just.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, now that, now that I know it's a public, that is.
If, if it is, that's what they said, they found. Like you say, we still gotta, is it? I mean, that could've went, that could've got changed somewhere in forty or something.
That's a front yard setback.
Right, right, if it is, you're right, if that's, if, if, right.
And I just wanted that.
That's a public way.
It's two, two.
Right, so he needs two frontages, twenty-five, he's only got seven.
That is correct.
It's right, if it's public, and who's to say it's public or private, it's two. That's all gonna be sorted out. Uh, you know what? It's getting more confusing now that we're going on here. Uh, does anyone have any other questions here that we can try to get through, any other questions, and then we'll come back to all the other things in the end?
I'm good.
Is there anybody? All right, and you're all set, and, and I guess guys, here's what we're looking at. If that's, that's a public way, instead of a private way, now he's got two front yard setbacks. So now it's twenty-five feet on that, and, and he's right, it's twenty-five feet, because it's private. I mean, a public way, not a private way, that says. So it's not a side yard setback. So, well, uh, I think we've heard the projects, so we don't have to hear it again, what he wants to do. Does anyone have any questions on the project itself?
No, no questions.
What we'll do is, if we could, we can put off, just see if people wanna speak on it, I'll, I'll go through that section. So the only thing we gotta make sure is the agreement is right, and then we can put a vote together. Other than, as long as we got what we're gonna write it at, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, how we're gonna write that up too. And, and we can't write the relief if we really don't know what exactly it is. So, is there anyone that wants to speak on this project in favor?
Yeah.
I have a letter here, January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, to my concern. We own the residence ten forty-four C Street in Housneck. Recently, we were informed that our neighbors, because of potential variance allowing clearing and overgrowth, adding space to their home. Multi-generational family. These neighbors took good care of their property, and changes would improve the look of the neighborhood. We have no objections on this. Charlie and Janice, Kirsten, what's their address? Ten forty-four. Is there anyone else?
Looks like we have a, looks like we have a hand up. Cece, they could also be a call-in user, it doesn't look like they have a mic.
Uh, Cece, you there?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, go ahead, speak.
Hi, first and foremost, my name is Carrie Chin, I'm one of the residents of Winter Blaine.
Of where? Winter Blaine, okay.
Winter Blaine, yes, I'm butted. So, uh, first and foremost, I wanna thank the chairman, members of the board, and Counselor McCarty for holding this meet, a hearing. So I give credit to Mr. Pinto, try to add value to his already beautiful home, as everyone said, nice house. But I wasn't made aware personally by Mr. Pinto in regards to his plan to add the addition. I understand that it's not necessary for Mr. Pinto to notify me, but as of neighbor courtesy, I wish I was made aware. I understand he said that you say hi, but people walked over and told me that, hey, I'm planning to do this, do this, it's fine, that's great, but neighbor courtesy. But, uh, that's a business.
You never got mailed?
I did, I got mail from Quincy, City of Quincy.
Okay, okay.
Not from, uh, not from my personally, from Mr. Pinto.
Okay.
So I wish you came over, maybe go talk to that a little bit, but my understanding is, uh, just look in the plan. I know, just look at it, it's deceiving, but it looks pretty big, the addition itself, I know they're gonna have a basement with it also, which is fine, but the problem is, it looks big, but the parcel's not that big. You actually come in person and look at the parcel, it's not that big. I know it's a number thing, but.
What we're, what we're waiting on now is for him to buy that big parcel.
Yes, my understanding is too, in regards to my concern, it's a lot.
Well, right now, it's thirteen thousand square feet he has of his lot, right now. That's without, without the requested conditions, which would be fifteen thousand, you know, to house, to house lots.
Yeah, again, understand, but just look at the paperwork, the plan itself, you know, it could be deceiving, but.
What I'm saying to you, he has a double lot there when this is finished, for a single-family home. And today's seventy-six hundred. He has a double lot. Okay, but what you said, the lot was small. Lot is not small, it's gigantic.
Okay, I just look at a number, so that's what, I look at the paperwork, so thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
So my main concern is the lot six. What is Mr. Pinto gonna do with it? There's a reason why he might want to move the fence, we understand that, but let me give a little background also. I moved in two thousand fourteen, but I lived in Quincy since two thousand five. So, when I bought the house, the fence was there, right, besides the other fence that he was, uh, uh, speaking on behalf of, uh, my other neighbor, but my friends, I noticed there's a little line there too. It's been there since two thousand nine, when the house was first built. I think this is the first house that was built by the original owner, who bought the property from, I guess, SPF. And, uh, during that time, the private way, or you wanna call it the public way, when I first moved in, it was a mess. Let me tell you, it was bushes, overgrown bushes everywhere, the young kids across the street from the park would come in and take a piss, do their thing, and just walked away. But thank God, the Quincy Police did a great job. You know, they moved them out, but then it's been overgrown. But look at my plan, the person who's in charge of that land was supposed to pick it up, take care of it, clean it, which I did call SPF, which they say is not their land, we don't care about it, but look in my back of my, on information, I think you were on the board also, that he puts a maintained the public way, it was a private way, he puts a maintain. But my neighbors, Winter Blaine, we actually go out there in the middle of summertime, and we permit, because the kids walking in the street, because it was overgrown, going to school, Winter Blaine was, you know, the neighbors just went out there and cleaned it, no question asked. We spent our own money, our own time, and we have kids helping out. But then, with that fence right now, existing right now, all the kids in the neighborhood come over, um, my neighbor put a string set, anyone could come over and use the string set. It's for the neighbors, it's for the residents of Quincy. It's fine, you come over, it's gated, we have a lock, you wanna go out, fine, access to the private way, which I understand. But we've been maintaining that location for a while. So if Mr. Pinto wants us to move the fence back, it's gonna be a big loss to the neighborhood. The kids usually come here, they, they doing right now, they out there playing snowball fight right now, because of the fence.
Well, you know, that's, that's, but that, that there is not up to us. What, that, that's up to the city. If that's a public way, you can't put a fence on a public way, so unless it's here, no evil, see, no evil, I don't know. No one says nothing, that's, no one's gonna make any trouble, that's fine, but, you know, you can't build fences on public ways either. So that, we don't have anything to do with that. You're gonna have to figure that out, I'm sorry you're gonna have to, but you're gonna have to figure that out with the city, and whoever buys it, and what the conditions are of it. And I think his honor, but I take a look at that, so you know, just so you know, uh, that we will take a look at that property and make sure that he has the rights before we make our decisions here.
Okay, you don't mind. So if Mr. Pinto's gonna plan to do anything with the lot six?
Right. Well, they said they weren't, they were gonna keep it open space, so.
Okay, open space, you think?
That's what he said, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chin, have you, have you seen the front of my home?
I did, yeah. I usually jog by there.
Yeah, I, I jog as well too, and, and, and apologies if you think that I slighted you and I didn't come visit you. We gotta understand, we're, we're in the midst of COVID. I, I have talked to Paul, we've, we've waved, we've called. You know, so I, I don't have your number, but if, if you wanna grab a discussion, we can, we can have a discussion about it more, right? My intention is clearing it, grass, and, you know, I, I really think some of it falls into this whole idea of the private way, the public way, I, I think that's gotta be hashed out, I agree. My intention is, is lawn there, right? I'm, I'm not looking, we're, we're not even looking to encroach, if you look at our plan on the pub, the private way. We're not looking to build onto that, we're looking to leave that as open space. I, I like, I like, I like open space. One of the reasons I want to clean that up, as you said, is to get rid of all, all that overgrowth, so we can see around it. I, I enjoy open space.
Anything else?
Hi, Marty, uh, this, oh. Hi, this is, this is the, the other neighbor, Paul MacCarren, for Winter Blaine. Uh, thank you, thank you to the.
Paul, wait a minute, and, and I should add, Mr. Chin, uh, also, but, uh, Michael, could you swear a minute, please?
I'm sorry about this, I'm a little behind. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help be God?
I do.
Thank you.
You're up.
Thank you, uh, and thank you to the board for looking into, um, you know, the situation here, and, uh, and again, just, just a point of clarity, obviously, I sat through the, uh, you know, all the different comments, and, and, um, when we, when we purchased the land at Full Winter Blaine, we, um, you know, we, we put the fence up. We actually had the land surveyed by Naponton Valley Survey, a family friend, Steve Desroach, God bless his soul. Um, you know, they did, they put the, you know, the lines out, and obviously, if you go anywhere in the neck, it looks different on paper than it does in person. And, you know, my, myself and my wife are both longtime or lifelong Quincy residents, and, uh, it was a dream to be able to live on that street. And a- again, the fence was put on there, for one of the concerns that I had, is because of the grade of the land. I, we have kids, there's six kids in the cul-de-sac, like Carrie mentioned, and it was the fact of its safety, and the fact that it is probably a seven or eight-foot drop from where it is. And I think the concern I have, just seeing the plan, is the size and scope with a basement as well. I have, uh, a stair, stairs in the back of my house that, that abuts Mr. Pinto's land, that, that's right across the way, and the stairs are falling off the house, since I purchased the house five years ago. So the stairs are falling off that, you know, off that side. So the erosion and potentially the conservation aspects of it, I guess, are, are, are kind of one of the biggest concerns for me. Um, and then, again, I, I, I haven't had the time to see the plan, they're, they're pretty robust, but as far as, you know, there's, there's obviously privacy plants today, or tree coverage. Um, you know, it doesn't look like there's any coverage, you know, in the plan going forward, so there's just a few things that, uh, a- again, it's, 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 again, like Carrie mentioned, it's pretty big compared to, um, the size that's there, or the lot that was purchased. I, I couldn't find the square footage, so I don't know what the total square footage is, but it, it looks pretty close to the size of this house. And, and again, let me just, let me just back up one second, and I thank you guys for your time. I, I think that, you know, no one is opposed to cleaning up that corner lot, and, and I'm not opposed to the, to the, you know, what we're trying to do here tonight. I just, I think everyone's looking to try to just figure out a way to kind of make this work for everybody.
Right. Anyone else?
Could, could I help answer some of his questions that he had there, or do you want me to take that offline with him?
No. I, I think we're all on the same page. I think we're all wanna make it all right. He's just trying to give you his view and, and what he's looking for, but I think we're all, we're all kind of on the, uh, same page, make sure it all gets done right, so everybody's happy. Is there, uh, is there anyone else opposed, undecided, uh? Second call?
I'm seeing any hands.
Third call? Let me see, uh, I got a letter here from the DPW, I think, wait a minute. We're talking in favor, I believe, weren't we? Anyone else in favor? Last call in favor.
John Rutherford, his hand up.
John, go ahead.
AI. John Rutherford, sixty-two, Brown Wall Road. Um, quick question I got, I'm a little bit confused on, on this one as I'm watching. Do they currently own the house that they're talking about adding the addition onto?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so they're.
They did, they're not going even into the private way, but they need a variance for, for the side setback, which would really be, if it was a private way, is one thing. If it's a public way, we have to write it differently, because it's a twenty-five-foot setback.
No, but you were, you were discussing that they were, they were going to, they, they haven't purchased that other piece of land, but do, do they own the house?
Yes.
They already live in that house.
They own their house, they already own their property, they're looking to buy that piece in the front, and that one strip, so it'll all be open space in the back. But they, they're like seven feet from the private public road, whatever it is.
Okay, okay. Well, like, like that last gentleman said, as long as the conservation people say it's okay, then, um, you know, that looks like that's good new growth, so that will add, um, you know, that's gonna be taxed a lot. I was just going over, someone didn't tax them, so, um, but I'm in favor of that.
Thank you, John. Uh, call that part of the hearing closed. I got a letter here from January twenty-first, twenty-two, twenty-one, ten twenty-six each week, HMZDA twenty-eight. We rudely submit on the off, off-reference project, that comments are as follows, that's why how much the privacy area will be increased through the development. Two, plans, plans, provide plan showing needs, existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, construction details, free upon completion of this project as built plan showing all utilities, building footprints, needs to be submitted. If anything further, please advise. Thank you, man, Paul. Is there anyone?
Counselor McCarty has his hands up, Marty.
Opposed or undecided? Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question to Mr. Duca, if, if he's there, um, why does one buy a one-foot strip? I mean, how did that, what does that do to the developer when he did Winter Blaine? I'm just curious, I've never run into this at all, and I just would like, you know, an explanation, John, that if, if, if Mr. Duca has it on that one-foot strip, what, what was that gonna do?
Spite, spite for it.
I know, it's a good name for it. Um, so it just gives you the ability to do anything up across that public way. It gives you kind of a, like you said, a spite border.
Yep.
To be able to get to. I've never, I, I guess, folks on the zoning have seen this before?
It's true. Yeah.
And it's there to, what I originally thought was to prevent people from that development, from accessing that road. That would be one, um, spite reason to, to put that, to create that strip. Um, I, and, and that's, uh, the only thing that I could come up with, Dave.
Yeah, the only thing that I see, and I totally agree with the chairman about a public way and the fence, but the fence is there now, um, does help out the Winter Blaine folks in regards to their kids in the cul-de-sac, and it looks nice, it's not a, it's a very nice fence. To go down that public way, which really has never been a public way, um, if we had to, we could easily move that fence. Now, um, it's not like a structure, a building, a garage, it's easy to move the fence, so I'm hoping that, uh, when we get through this, that Winter Blaine and Mr. Pinto can figure out a deal with that fence, because I think it, um, it does really add to that neighborhood. It's a nice fence, maybe they can work something out, but, um, that spite strip, uh, causes a lot of, um, causes a lot of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call? Call that part of the hearing closed. Could I have a motion to continue this till, uh, March ninth, please?
Can I ever ask a question?
Will that give you enough time to deal with that, Counselor, a month?
Yes, I, I was talking with Mr. Timmons this week a little bit, and I think that we should be able to come back with something, and hopefully talk with Mr. Pinto, Mr. MacCarren, Mr. Chin, and, um, we'll come up with something.
All right.
Thank you.
I have a question, question here?
Who, Charlie?
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like to go back to the registry and have them, have the plans prior to the subdivisions on that corner presented to us.
Yeah, yeah, we, we did a subdivision on there when the rec we were sold. Yeah, yeah. We, we did a subdivision on there when the rec we was sold, two thousand and eight.
Okay, but before that, before that, the other house had to have a subdivision plan, too.
Yeah, they did. Yeah.
So let's, let's go back and, I mean-
I think it was five lots. If I'm not mistaken, I, if I remember right, I was here. Five, I think it was five lots up there. I think. Four? Four lots, sorry, four lots. Four lots after, before improvement record. So there's five whole lots on the way.
If, if we get the, if we get the original plans on file at the Registry of Deeds for that whole corner, starting at the extreme boundary to Mr. Pinto's land, and we come back up to the other street.
Yeah, Way, Wayman Street to the public way.
Right, then we can, we can do away with what we don't have to deal with.
Yep. Well, we, we, we did the subdivision, so whatever it is, it is. It, it, it's legal now, so it doesn't matter what it was before. Whatever we did in two oh eight is what's legal now.
Well, what I'm saying, to determine private versus public way, versus spite strips, versus subdivision-
I think they had to go back. It was, Dave said he went back like nineteen-twenty to find it, say, public.
Let's see those.
Someone else, someone, I don't know who changed it, when they changed it, the public or private, but who knows if someone bought that nineteen-forty? We don't know.
Well, let's see.
Timmons would answer all, right? He'll know exactly. He'll look into that, and he'll get every answer for that for us, Charlie.
And there's gotta be a plan. There has to be a plan. Let's just have the plan. We don't need the answers. We just need the plan.
But the plan, I'm saying, you, you got a plan, and then for the road, for that road, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, who knows when it changed? We, if it was, you, you wanna know when it was changed and how it was changed? I don't know. We'll have records in the works. Like, it could have been late, oh, when it was laid out, or when it was created, nineteen-ten or something, like you're saying?
Yeah, the records for that are there.
Yeah. Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with Mr. Timmons, though, and I think I'll, I'll get a hold of the Counselor, and we'll look into that in the next few weeks. But do, do you think we had enough time, May ninth? I mean, uh, March ninth?
May ninth could be plenty of time.
Hope I'm in my boat. Hope I'm in my boat this year. Not July. Last year it rained a whole month of March, April, May. My God, June it rained, it wasn't June. Is that a good date? March ninth? You think we can nip this, Dave?
Yeah, um, Marty, just to say-
How we can continue it again, alright?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and to Charlie's point, we were back and forth and back and forth with private-public, and then ended up with public. And I think Mr. Timmons did some extra due diligence, so I'll get back with Jim, and we'll be ready for March ninth with some answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, can I have a motion, please, uh, Mr. Bass?
Mr. Chairman, I'm at number, I'm at number twenty-dish eight-eight, Paul Pinto, for a variance to construct an addition on the premises number ten twenty-sixth C Street. I make a motion to continue the hearing to March ninth.
Second. Um, can I have a voice?
Mark Nakin?
Yes.
Mike Kovaev?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Further under tonight's agenda, I see Mr. Keith been there all night, watching this whole thing, Mr. Keith.
Yeah, I almost fell asleep.
There you go, D B A case twenty-one-one. Brian Keith, for variance to construct an attached garage with an addition above the premises ninety-one Bayview Ave. Keith, you have the floor. Please state to the board what you'd like to do with your home.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Brian Keith, ninety-one Bayview Ave. I'm pretty much looking to build a attached garage with a room on top to add a fourth bedroom.
What I'm looking at is, uh, you know, I think it's funny. Keith, I think I wired that house nineteen sixty-nine and seventy. What year was that house built?
That's why my lights flicker?
That's why they flicker, buddy. Alright, you know what?
I think it was nineteen seventy-three.
It was seventy-three. It was seventy, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I think I wired that, I got out of school in seventy-one, so probably sixty-nine or seventy.
Alright, yeah.
David's electric did that house. I worked at high school. Oh, did a good job. Everything was good. We had the central box and everything in that house. It was the first thing we had going on. It changed the rules. Uh, I see what you're trying to do. You, you're taking a driveway that's there, you're covering it, you're putting a garage, and you're putting the master bedroom above it?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Uh, Counselor, you wanna say something first? Please, Counselor. Hey, David?
Yeah, real quick, I talked to Brian. I've known Brian, um, for a while, and he's just moved into that house, and, um, you know, uh, it's great to have families like the Keeps wanna stick around, and, um, I think it's a, a nice project down there to a, to a house, even though the electrical might be questionable.
Oh, you guys. Alright, Counselor. Hey, payback's brutal, brother. Wait till you want to speak next time. Alright, uh, Mr. Kovaev, any questions?
No, I have no questions.
So Brian? Good. The Chin?
Just a question to the applicant, whether you talked to your neighbor on the six-foot-six proposed, uh, boundary on that side of the house, the right side of the house? You wanna go, she wanted a six-six to the line there?
Yes, uh, her name's Heather. Uh, I think her last name's McDonald. She's a really quiet lady. I think she lives by herself. Um, I've mentioned to her many times, and she said, yeah, she would never have any problem. Um, it's not the side of her house, so it'd be her driveway also. So it'd be building on the side of her driveway, not the side of her house, so she really seemed like she had no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Frankel?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Anyone?
John Rotifell.
John, go ahead.
John.
John Rotifell, sixty-two Grandwall Road. I am in favor. I'm always in favor of the, um, garage and the additions above them. Thank you.
Thank you. Go again.
There's another John.
Johnny, go ahead.
Yeah, I just-
Johnny, wait a minute. Take a note, Mr. Bass, swear a man, please.
I tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths will help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, John Gallagher, forty Crosby Street, uh, a neighbor of Brian, a friend of Brian, you know, my whole life. Um, I just would have to, you know, try to be in full support of what he's trying to do over there. It's only gonna help improve uh, the neighborhood. Everything he's done to that property so far from moving in has been great. Um, so, you know, I really hope that you can, uh, you guys can improve this more.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Call that part of the hearing closed. They have a letter here from, uh, DPW, January twenty-second, ninety-one Bayview Ave, H B S M Z B A twenty-one-one. We refute this middle above our project, have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call, close. No hands, no? No hands, no, you're out. Okay, uh, I'm gonna voting in favor, Mr. Bass.
I'll be voting in favor. In favor?
Paul Ryan?
In favor?
Chin?
I'm in favor.
Frankel?
In favor.
Could I have a motion, please, Mr. Bass?
This is the chairman, Z B A number twenty-one-one. Brian Keith, for a variance to construct an attached garage with an addition above on the premises number ninety-one Bayview Ave. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. Uh, Madam clerk, can we have a voice vote, please?
Mark Nakin?
Yes.
Mike Kovaev?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a motion adjourned, please.
It's the chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Uh, all in favor? Alright.
Alright.